This is a meeting of the Newbury Library Board of Trustees. It's being conducted today is the 24th of July, it's 10:03. The meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth through the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus and order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus. We have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Your order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is put in, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment if anybody joins us and after we've had an opportunity to discuss the matters at hand, they're invited to share their thoughts also. While this meeting of the Newbury Public Library is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom, is posted on the agenda on the town's website. And I will call the roll. Please say, "Present," when I call. Alex Burke.
Present.
Dick Raven.
Present.
Margaret Grimes.
Present.
Terry Luttrell.
Present.
Dick Bisari, Chair, present also, obviously, and Jean Ackerly, Director of the Library, is joining us. Jean?
Present.
Okay, all right. Agenda is, I guess, minutes of the last, a couple of minutes of the last meeting?
Yep, the last meeting was July 8th, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, okay, that's what I have, I just wanted to, it feels like I've seen you more recently than July 8th, but.
It's the Zoom effect.
Exactly. The meeting was called to orders via Zoom at 11:00 a.m. In attendance, Dick Bisari, Margaret Grimes, Terry Luttrell, Alex Burke, Dick Raven, Jean Ackerly. The Board voted unanimously to approve the minutes from the June 11th meeting. Jean presented the Director's Report. The Board voted unanimously to transfer $8,666 from state aid to augment staff salaries due to the town budget shortfall. Is that the proper way to note that, document that, Jean?
It's not necessarily a transfer, it's, we're not transferring any funds, it's more to pay from that account.
Okay. All right, but, and that's the correct amount, yes?
Yes.
Okay. The Board voted unanimously to nominate and confirm Margaret Grimes as Secretary of the Board. The Board voted unanimously to nominate and confirm Dick Bisari as Chairman of the Board. The Board continued to have its ongoing discussions regarding the reopening of the library that are consistent with the operations of town government. The meeting adjourned at 12:24 p.m. And I have a list of documents, but I'm not going to read them.
Any, any, is there a motion to accept as amended? Can I move? Okay, motion seconded by Dick, seconded by Terry. All in favor, Alex?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Terry?
Hi.
Hi, for me also. Minutes have been approved. All right, next. Jean?
Yes, unfortunately, I don't have the agenda in front of me because we had a very chaotic morning here, recognizing that there are hotspots that people may be keeping very long periods of time. So what did I have next?
I think you were talking about the.
Yeah, okay. I couldn't remember if I snuck anything else in there.
Nothing we were going to discuss today is our.
Yeah, right. So we have a date. The managers' meeting was yesterday, and Newbury is progressing very slowly, being very cautious, and Town Hall, this has not been made public, but Town Hall is probably going to open the week after Labor Day. So that will be the 8th, and obviously, there's an election on that day too. But we will be the 9th because there's an election on the 8th, and I didn't think that was a good day to try and do a soft opening.
Town election, primary is, not town election, I misspoke, but the state primary is September 1.
Oh, why did I write that down as the 8th? Oh, yeah, that's where I had it originally, and then for some reason I switched it.
Yeah, there was some contention over it statewide, but it is the first.
Okay.
Will be rather.
All right, so then we will be September 8th, and that will be the same day as all municipal buildings.
Okay. So they're not opening August 3rd by appointment?
No, they're shooting for September. I mean, everything's going very well for them with this procedure. I know Leslie, she's got early voting starting toward the end of August, so I think they're going to, they're going to somehow have people come into that downstairs lobby and do that. But everybody else seemed to be very comfortable waiting until September. I did, you know, I did mention that some of our patrons are getting quite antsy and, you know, asking, you know, why is the library not open? But, you know, given the option to take some more time with this and not feel quite distressed about it, I went with their timeline, and I know you had expressed interest in sticking, you know, having all the, being consistent with time, with town, the other town buildings. So I think if I pressed it, I could have gotten this open earlier, but I couldn't see a whole lot of reason to do that. And I guess Chairman Colby, when Tracy Blaze spoke with him, he suggested waiting till September.
Well, and patrons can still, I mean, it's not like they don't have access to materials.
Right.
That would be a whole different thing.
Right.
But they can get what the actual, you know, the hotspots, not just books, but they can get materials, and that, to me, is the bottom line important thing.
Right. I'm glad you said that, and I did say this, I think, at the meeting, that, you know, other libraries with larger staffs have been sort of augmenting their services, making them more appealing, you know, having tarps outside with carts of books that people can browse and things like that, and I just haven't, we haven't been able to put our brains on that really because we're just so, you know, trying to figure out how the heck we were going to open. So now that we have this extra month, we're going to, number one, expand curbside hours, probably 10 to 4 every day, and then we think, as of now, 12 to 7 on Tuesdays. And we're going to do it differently. Rather than have people make appointments, we're going to have them call us when they get to the parking lot, we're going to have their, and then we're going to check out their stuff and put it outside. We probably won't even put it in bags anymore. We'll just turn them upside down on the table. And we're going to make that all, you know, we're probably going to have a table outside, make it look more, you know, just more welcoming and, you know, more feeling like they're in the building as much as we can do that without them actually being in the building. So, you know, we'll try to give them the maximum services we can provide while still having the doors shut.
What's the status of ILL right now?
It's, we're, it's all, basically, I'm going to say full speed ahead, but it's not full speed at all, it's getting off very sluggishly, but you can now place holds on any book in any library in the consortium. So delivery has started, but it's, there's so much backlog, and there's a shortage of bins, which is a big deal, like we did our pull list this morning, but we've only got two bins, so that's as far as we can go, even though there are 500 items on the pull list. So we're, you know, we're, we'll be letting, you know, I figure if each week, we have a little bit more of an expanded service, you know, this week, we're going to let people know that they can now borrow books from other libraries, you know, then, and then we're going to expand, probably next week, the hours for curbside, you know, we'll keep, you know, expanding the services, so hopefully, that'll ease the pain of still not being able to come in and browse.
All right. Next, Alex.
I think it's a really good plan, and I think slower is better.
Yeah. What's your plan?
The newspaper. I mean, it's, you know, a lot of places that were really good are no longer good, like Hong Kong and Taiwan, for example, and so even places that have really maximal controls are finding this virus to be really potent and, you know, continually flaring up, so I think slower is better, so we can watch what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, who knows what the situation will be in September.
The people who are antsy, what are they antsy about, are they saying, oh, I really need to use the computer, or?
It's, they miss us, and they miss browsing, I mean, it's the truth, that's what they say, and they miss browsing.
So can I suggest a, maybe, meet and greet the librarians Zoom for the public who are missing you, say hi?
Yeah, that's not a bad idea at all. That's, yeah, I like that. I like that, thank you, Dick.
Maybe closer to the opening, maybe, and you can say, here we are, and this is what you can expect.
Right. No, I like that. I'm, you know, I'm not sure, we're waiting to say anything, obviously, to the public until the town puts out their messaging, and we're going to, you know, piggyback on that in terms of the reasons, you know, why, you know, safety of staff, safety of patrons. We'll just borrow their messaging to make sure we're all on message. Are you talking, Dick? I can't hear you.
No, no, I was agreeing with you.
Okay. And so we'll, in the meantime, we'll be focusing on our messaging, how we're, you know, getting the word out about ILLs and then the expanded curbside and all of that, that'll be up to us. I wanted to say too, at the, at the meeting yesterday, it, you know, both Mike Riley and Deb Rogers really seemed to be comfortable leaving the decisions up to us for the most part, you know, I made them aware that there's a lot of, a lot of guidance coming down from the state, and I think Deb had seen some of it, and they just seemed to feel very comfortable letting us, you know, make most of the decisions about cleaning or any of that on our own. I did, did mention that we thought, you know, when the public came in, so this is all down the road, that we would need more cleaning, and Mike suggested that there are, there are quite a few companies out there that are focusing on COVID cleaning, they might be sort of a supplement to the cleaning that you have, I think some of them might be on MHEC, so he said, go for it, and, you know, and we'll most likely be able to charge that to either the CARES Act or FEMA, I guess, whatever the CARES Act doesn't cover, FEMA does and vice versa. So, and then I heard from Leslie, who said, you know, if I do go that road, she definitely want to use them before and after both elections, so, so that, I was more or less given permission to look into that, so that's something on my to-do list, because I don't know for sure that our current cleaners can put in extra hours, and to be honest, if it's money that's not going to, you know, hit our budget, I'd just as soon get, you know, some real professionals that can get in here and really blast the place. So that, that was reassuring. They did also suggest, I asked them about bathrooms, and they suggested having a designated But I know, I don't really think it's a legal issue, but I know a lot of libraries aren't allowing bathroom use, some are, so that's another thing that, you know, we'll hopefully get more clarity on as we move forward. And there was one more thing I was going to mention. Yeah, can't remember, it'll come to me. So.
Did you see that checklist that I sent you yesterday from a library in Georgia?
No, when did you send that?
Yesterday.
What, in the morning?
I'm sorry, I sent it. It's, I'll resend it if I haven't, it's a, I happen to be bouncing around Facebook yesterday, and a Facebook friend of mine, someone I don't know that well, from Georgia, happened to put up the checklist or the conditions of opening in this library, and I forget where in Georgia, but it's like the district, it's the main library for a large district, so it's not just a tiny town. No bathrooms, browsing only in new materials. If you find something, when you look at the spine, a library staff member is the only one who can touch the book and give it to you when it's checked out, so there's real stringent limitations.
Yeah.
To minimize tactile spread or constant re-cleaning. I mean, if you imagine, if somebody picks a book out of the shelf and then wants to put it back in, that book is going to have to be cleaned and rested for I don't know how long before it goes back in, so it's just a way to, something else to think about.
Yeah, and the guidance is a little confusing on that because they, the, I think it's the IMLS, I'm not sure, but they've been doing testing on different materials and releasing it to libraries, and so just this week, it came down that magazines and board books, the virus lives for four days. So now we went from quarantining things from three days to four days, but everybody that's already open or considering opening and allowing browsing is basically saying, and this was our plan and may still be our plan, I don't know, we were going to have signs that say, you know, judge a book by its cover, in other words, you know, look at it but don't touch it. We were going to have all kinds of signage, but if somebody does take it out, look at it and decide they don't want it, they were going to put it on a cart, but we were only going to quarantine those for one day, and that's what most libraries are currently doing, so, you know, it's still all over the place, hopefully, it will be a little bit clearer by September, but probably other things won't be clear, so it's just, this is the ride we're on, but.
The primary concern is, you know, is in the air and not in material.
Right, right, because that.
Doesn't mean we shouldn't be careful.
Yeah, the droplets in the air is, I'm finding very concerning, you know, how long do they last, all of that, so, and we, we were trying to keep people's visits as brief as possible, we were at 45 minutes, you know.
The library in Georgia was 30.
30, yeah. We were thinking 30, and then 30 minutes to clean, but that we'd be open so few hours, so it's, yeah. It is what it is.
Jean, with September 8th date, is this by appointment, or are we going to crawl open the doors?
As of now, it will be by appointment.
Okay, is that what Town Hall is doing?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, they're even, like if somebody needs to have some, like pay cash for their taxes or something, they're going to try and get them up into that second floor meeting room and have them socially distanced, and they're being very, very careful. And that, you know, that's encouraging, yeah, I will tell you that Newbury Port is opening, I think, next week. So our major competitor will be open, and we won't, but, you know, we'll, our people like us for what we offer and what we're going to offer as much as we possibly can.
Little by little.
By little, and I think a lot of, I don't think Georgetown's in any rush to open. Merrimack and Salisbury, I don't think are either, West Newbury either, and I'm talking about their town officials as much as the libraries, so hopefully, we won't get too much flack, because people, some people have said, well, other libraries are open, and they were saying that when I knew that no libraries were open, so.
You know, it might be a good idea, what Dick suggested about Zoom for patrons, librarians, one of the things they've done through Joppa Flats, several different things, what are you looking forward to most for coming back, you know, what you miss, or, they had questions that you could have a discussion about, and it might be, you know, opening it to the public for what would be most desired.
Yes.
How, or, how can you tolerate just looking at a book and not touching it?
Right. Yeah, and keeping it as light as possible.
Yes, and it's an exchange between people.
Right, right. And Newbury Port sent out a survey, and I, I was like, I think the other directors were all like, yeah, are you nuts? Because, you know, surveys just come back with, everybody wants everything, and you know, especially in this set of circumstances, you can't give them probably a quarter of what they want, but I think it was a good, a good PR move, but I would hesitate on our end because, you know, we have a much smaller staff, so.
Is the plan to have the windows open all the time and have air circulating from outside?
Yeah, I'm doing that now. That's, that's the recommendations for, for any space really, even though we've got our HVAC set at where it's supposed to be set at, that's still recommended, so there's, in the beginning, and the stuff that, the information that Fred Doherty, our HVAC guy gave us, was about replacing filters, but I've also seen information that doesn't seem to think that's so important, so I ran it by Mike Riley yesterday, and because he was still in the mindset that we weren't open to the public, he said he didn't see any reason, but, you know, we may need to revisit that when we get closer to open, opening to the public, and hopefully, again, there'll be better information.
Let me just add one caution about the Zoom, the public Zoom meeting. I was, this past week, on a 30-person, people flowed in and out, Zoom birthday party, in which everyone was asked to mention something they'd read or watched during the lockdown that they loved. There were some people in the group who felt the necessity of talking for more than five minutes, you know, on listing six or seven things, they just couldn't control themselves, and Carol and I had each picked one, she had one and I had one, I understood what it meant to try to wrangle a meeting, and we left after an hour, people were still going on, I mean, you know. So I just think what's really important is structure in these things, like having one or two questions. I happen to think that that question, what have you been enjoying during, you know, what material have you been enjoying during, during the lockdown, is a really good one for, for each of you as library members and staff to explore.
Yeah.
So it's not all about doom and gloom and about what we can't have, you know, all that stuff, but I do think that, that learning how to manage a meeting like that is not simple.
No.
You're going to be using your mute button a lot.
That's why they invented it.
It should be called on in a way, you know, as opposed to free for all.
Yeah, that's good advice.
People have different calls, I just, I was just getting grumpy about it a minute.
It could also be limited membership, but more frequent, you know, we're doing it, we've got room for 10 people for a half hour, something like that, and then next time, it's a different 10 people.
Then that can be posted as well, and people can see it, and, you know, and so forth, so it's, it's a shareable thing and useful that way.
Right, and probably not let it be more than an hour, because then.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, maybe not even that long.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, because it's just one of the frustrating things is we haven't been able to do, we haven't been able to be librarians for months now, you know, and talk about books, I mean, just a little, when people call to request things, talk, you know, just talk about the stuff we usually talk about, and the, we've got the community read, so that will wrap up in September, we tried to get the author to be in on that, but she was way out of our price range. So, yeah, I think anytime we can interact online would be really good, and just keep those connections going. And then, you know, maybe even, we do have a tarp in the back room here, so I may drag that out, see if it's usable, and may even, maybe even having a special meeting of some sort, I don't know, I have to talk to the staff about all this, this is just off the top of my head, but, and have books out, maybe on a genre or something, chat a little bit, obviously at a distance, it'd be outdoors, and have mobile circ, we can actually do mobile circ on iPads, and, you know, library, well, they're calling them at other places Pop-Up Library, and some children's rooms are doing them throughout their towns, we don't have a whole lot of places to do that in Newbury, if anybody can think of one, but I couldn't think of any place other than the Upper Green, I always get the Upper Green and the Lower Green mixed up, but the one across from the Old Town Hall, you know, doing something there, but it really would be better to do it somewhere where there's already something happening. So they're having baseball games here again, so we could consider doing it for that, just to, you know, get out in the community as much as it's possible, while we can still do stuff outdoors and keep that going, so any other ideas are much appreciated. And we're going to have a staff meeting next Wednesday, and we'll, we'll bat some of this around.
Probably do one on Palm Island, do one by Piddah Hall, they're not going to allow any public parking lots for non-residents until into September, did you see that, yeah? And at the end too, in Newbury Port, the big parking lots are only for residents, no?
Yeah, yeah, people are going around and knocking on people's doors to see if they can park in their driveway.
You could use perhaps the airport.
Yeah, yeah, right next to Metsi's food truck.
Right.
That's not a bad idea.
Was something in the paper today about.
Digestion and information at the same place.
What was that, Dick?
I said there was something in the paper today about non-resident parking on Palm Island, there are some lots apparently, non-residents, not public lots, but, I didn't read the whole article, we just saw the headline.
Yeah, no, those are good suggestions.
They're obviously going to do something for residents.
Yeah, I mean, way back, back in the old days, Piddah Hall was always on our list of trying to do more out there, we've done a little bit of programming and things, so maybe now we can use the parking lot, if, I have to remember his name, Richard something, ah, yeah, anyway, I would have to get in touch with him. And then people who have ice cream next at, next door.
Yes.
Yeah, books and ice cream, yeah, there's possibilities, whether I, whether I can, you know, grab enough staff to make that happen, I don't know, but I will give it my best shot. Yeah.
I think that's, that's kind of a realistic aspect of this too, you have limited staff to do all of these things, while you're still trying to put a plan in place, making modifications in the building to meet the future needs, you know, so, all good ideas.
Yeah, we'll see what kind of reaction I get from the staff when I bring them up.
Yeah. The luck, Jean.
Dick, do you want to fill everybody in on where you're thinking the furniture's going to go, because Alex reminded us that we have elections.
The document that Jean sent out, things, Town Tasks, it's talking about putting the furniture in the meeting room, and Alex pointed out the last time I mentioned it, we have elections. One of them is the first of September, and then the other one is November 3rd, so we can't be putting all of the furniture in there and moving it and setting up, you know, the voting booths and.
know, the voting booths and taking it down and all that. So looking around, I was there when I signed documents the other day with Jean, we walked around a little bit just to look at locations, and lo and behold, there aren't many locations. The only place that has any kind of volume capacity to it is the area where the newspapers and the magazines are. That area was going to be cordoned off anyway, so if we can stack chairs primarily in that area, it won't look attractive. But if, again, I was thinking if, you know, after the fact, Jean, I was in CBS actually, and I saw some curtain, like if it was a stanchion with, you know, curtains on it so that you could block it off, do it in such a way that, you know, at least from the circ desk, you could still look out the windows. But if we stack the chairs there and it's, and leave the tables where they are, and just, you know, there's no encouragement for anybody to be sitting at the tables, they're obviously going to be positively touched and used, with documents on or something, but people won't be sitting there. So that's the only thing I can think of in terms of where to put this, unless we rent some pods and put all the furniture outside in pods. My experience with those are, at the college, we would store things in containers outside and open it up six, eight months, a year later, and throw all the stuff away because of the changes in temperature and.
Green.
Yeah, yeah, it was, you had tablet armchairs, like it was, oh, they're wonderful, we'll save them, we'll save them, then we went to use them, and okay, get the dumpster. You know, so it was, we just stored them until we could throw them away. I really wouldn't want to do that with, especially with upholstered furniture, you know, wooden furniture, obviously affected by climate, you know, temperature change. So that's the only thought I have in terms of where to put it. If anybody has any other ideas, there really is limited space in that building, other than, you know, other than the meeting room, and obviously that is, we can't really impact on that for right now. So that's my thought, anyway.
Yeah, and even if the children's room is closed, there's really not room down there either.
No, I mean, and again, hopefully that incrementally over time, you're going to open up the children's room, and then you're going to have to do something with the furniture that you put there. So I think this way, if we put it in one location now and just leave it there for the foreseeable future, and a full such time in the future, we can encourage people to sit and hang out in the library, whatever that is, one only knows.
But if the election is on the first.
Yep.
Then we have some days between the first and the eighth where we could fill up a meeting room if we thought we weren't going to be using the meeting room. It's not like it's impossible, it's just, it's just pressurized in terms of timing.
Right, and then you're going to have to move it in order to make the room available for November 3rd, for the general, for the presidential election. So, I mean, that's, you know, we had talked about that, Dick, putting it in and taking it out, and then putting it back in again, and it's, you know, a fair amount of work, and every time you have an election, you know, stuff may be sitting in there next spring too, you know.
What about sprinkling, I mean, I don't know how much it is, so forgive me, this is maybe stupid, but, you know, in some areas of the stacks, if we're going to limit, limit or eliminate browsing in the stacks for the time being, you know, we clearly need, if things have to get pulled out of the stacks, there needs to be access, but I'm just wondering if there's room for pieces here and there that would make it more easier to manage what little other space we have.
Yeah, I mean, we looked at, down at the back end of the, beyond the stacks area, there's a sitting reading area back there, where we could, we could put some stuff there and just coordinate off with, you know, some, something, you know. And just as long as there's access to that emergency exit back there, we don't block that off, I think, Jean, what do we figure, we could probably put maybe eight to 10 chairs, you know, the upholstered chairs down in that area, turn them so that they're facing the outside and doesn't encourage people to sit in, you could tuck a few there, off to the, if you're looking straight down, off to the left-hand corner, maybe be able to stick, you know, another four or five in that corner, and then off to the other right-hand corner, maybe again, and this is packing things against the wall, you know, but there are stacks down in that area that people would be accessing, so, you know, I don't know. Yeah, we could tuck things here and there. Jean, where you wanted to put your fireplace, you know, that area, we could probably tuck some in there, but there are stacks in that area too, so you can have people, you know, wanting to go in there. And maybe, you know, some of the wooden chairs, we can stack in the local history room. I mean, we can spread them around so that it's not all concentrated in one location.
Yeah.
It's more of a look at it.
Yeah, might look a little better.
I think in the stacks area, Dick, I think the intent, if I'm right, Jean, is to keep all of the stacks open with one-way traffic or one person per aisle or something.
Yeah, one person per aisle, I think, which works out pretty well if people follow it in terms of just.
You've got to anticipate they're not going to, so.
Yeah.
Like they follow the one-way aisles in Market Basket.
It's amazing how many mistakes you can make grocery shopping now.
Absolutely, absolutely, I do it all the time.
It's Massachusetts, Terry. The courteous mass driver slows down for the red lane.
Yeah, I was in Market Basket on Tuesday, and I gently told somebody he was going the wrong way down the aisle until I realized I was going the wrong way. I found him later and apologized, you know. I can't pick an elephant out among pictures.
Oh, gosh. I won't go there. I'm tempted, but I won't. So, any other thoughts? You know?
I think you've covered them, Dick, very well. The upholstered pieces could be clustered, as you suggest.
Yeah.
Back left, back right, and still maintain the emergency flow if needed, God forbid, but, you know, cordoned off or tarp'd over, or turned over for that matter.
Yeah, that's possible. Wooden chairs, we can obviously stack seat to seat and consolidate them that way. So that, I'm not concerned, even we could put a wooden chair on one of the upholstered too, just to kind of compact it that way. Jean, I'm more than willing up and move stuff around, so try it over the next two months.
I mean, if you need me, no problem.
And we can figure, hey, this works, it doesn't work, and it looks stupid, you know, let's take it apart and do it again. So while we have the time to do that, I don't want to be looking at September 1st saying, oh, gee, we've got to move stuff around. If we want to do it, I'm willing to start right now, move a couple of pieces at a time. I got a little volley, we can move stuff on, so it's, you know.
Okay.
You don't have to look at it now to do it.
I have one of those too.
I think we have one here, although it does seem to vanish every once in a while.
Oh, okay.
Like many things around here.
Would you ever stack things on top of the tables?
We could, just like in the old school days, when you turn your chair over and put it on the table, yeah, I mean, that's possible too.
Yeah.
That sends a definite message.
Yeah, no, it's a good possibility, we just leave them right there, and then we could put some kind of a attractive something around it to keep the chairs fixed on the tables, because people will, they get down and sit on it, I think.
In the mood of the times, you could put barbed wire.
How about electrical wire?
Better product.
Oh, boy.
Conversations that none of us thought we would be having, so.
Really?
We can use the Christmas lights, how's that?
Very good, Alex, yeah, actually, yeah. So I think we want to look at all of the options, and while we have a month and, you know, about a month, let's say, to play with some of this stuff, let's figure on doing some of this, so, all right?
Yeah, it'd be very easy for me to just, like, put my brain off it for a week or two and.
That's right, that's right, let's focus on it.
Yes, exactly.
So.
I just don't want to obsess over it anymore, I'm hoping I won't be able to do that, so.
No.
Or will be able to not obsess.
Close that drawer for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least for five days. So I think maybe it would make sense to meet toward the end of August if people can do that.
I'm not going anywhere.
Say when.
Um.
God willing, you prick don't rise.
Maybe the, let me think, I'm going to take a vacation there somewhere, but I don't know where yet.
I don't suggest Florida, Jean.
I'm not going anywhere, just vacation. I take one every August, actually.
Living on the island, I can't imagine you'd want to leave anyway, so.
Exactly, exactly. What about, so what day of the week is best for people in that, in that area?
Just pick it to your convenience.
Mondays would be tough for me, but other than that, the other days.
So what's today?
Fridays aren't great for me.
Okay.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Sure.
Sure.
And I would suggest we start early in the morning before the heat builds up, because the windows will all be open properly.
Okay.
Just thought.
Oh, are you thinking it's going to be in person?
Yeah.
Uh, no. No. The public meetings and all that, board meetings are still virtual until September.
Okay, then.
Basically.
The furniture moving, guys.
The furniture, oh, furniture moving.
We changed subjects, nobody gave me a topic sentence, so I confuse easily, please bear that in mind.
Hardware furniture virtually.
Wow, huh? Holtergeistin.
This is true, so maybe we meet virtually on the 20th and then plan for something the following week.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, so unless you, is 10 o'clock work for everybody on, for meeting, Zoom meetings? Or you prefer later?
10 is fine.
No, it's fine.
10, okay?
But what about moving furniture and trying things in the library?
Well, we could do that the following week.
That's awful late.
Oh, okay, I got you.
That's what I'm talking about, Jean, I want to, want to get it going like next week.
My only reservation with that is, who knows what we're looking at in September? Who knows if we're even going to open, you know, if things are, if the tide changes.
You know, it's going to be, there's a certain amount of risk in anything we do. If it changes, I'll move it back. But right now, this looks like the course ahead, you're going to open up two appointments in September, and we're going to move furniture before that. If that changes, we'll be flexible, it'll change, okay? I'm available, I can come up Tuesday, start.
That's fine, I don't want anybody to hurt themselves, so I'm sure that you can help.
I'd be happy to come and tell people what to do, but.
I'll come and help.
Okay.
Me too. You know, set it up.
Yeah. And you're open on Tuesday, right, Jean?
Yes, we are.
What time do you open?
There is someone here from 8:00 on. Aaron comes in at 8:00.
9:00? And 9:00 on Tuesday, we'll start the process.
Tuesday 28th, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll warn the staff.
Absolutely. Reality's going to set in, well, I'm sure it already has, but, you know, but the fact that we're preparing for September is going to resonate.
I think, I don't know, Tracy kept referring to this as phase two, so I'm assuming she means phase two of phase three. So phase one of phase three didn't allow board members in any buildings, like they haven't been letting any board members in Town Hall.
Good.
I'm going to assume, I mean, you've already been in, how am I supposed to get them signed? So.
That's right.
Just be ready then, you know.
If they want to come over and throw us out, then it's up to them.
Okay, gotcha, just letting them know.
I'm not going to get hung up on that, so.
Okay.
Unless they want, unless they want to send the DPW guys there, we need to be cutting grass and doing a whole host of other things in town, you know? Yeah, and I think, I'll forget it.
Okay.
It's being recorded, so I'll shut my mouth. Okay.
Just bring your dollies, don't forget those.
Oh, you will. All right.
All right, so 9:00 on the 28th, we're trustee furniture moving day at 9:00, and.
You know, we're not looking to do it all in one day.
Right, and get an idea of how.
An idea, we'll see what it looks like, you know, say, oh, that doesn't work, and modify it and adjust accordingly, but I'd rather have a month to do this and not a week.
Okay, fair enough. And then a trustee meeting on August 20th at 10:00.
Yes.
No meeting.
Zoom.
Zoom. All right. Anything else?
I will tell you that I did, I did my first encumbrance, I can never say the word, encumbrance request yesterday for some things that were ordered in FY '20 that can still come out of FY '20 funds. I had until yesterday to do that, so we had about 3,000 left. I just, I found that out, I guess, this week. So I put about $1,000 worth of expenses, many of them COVID-related, toward that. So I was really glad I was able to do that.
And are you getting the supplies that you need, hand sanitizers and?
I'm not, we have two stands, I think I have three stands actually, for the portable hand sanitizer stations, but I don't have the dispensers, they have not come in yet. So that's another reason I'm glad we're waiting. And the wipes is still, I don't know who's hoarding all the wipes, but, well, I guess the western part of the station, of the station, of the country has all the wipes, and wipes are what our cleaners really prefer to use, and wipes are going to be convenient when we're wiping down computers, so we'll just keep waiting, I guess, and hope for the best. If, you know, if it comes to having to use a paper towel with spray cleaner on it, that's what we'll have to do. But other than that, I, we're in pretty good shape, I think, with, once those dispensers come, I feel pretty good.
All right, anybody have anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Alex moved.
I second it.
Everyone's in favor, it's adjourned, and we'll see you, those that can make it, on the 28th, moving furniture.
Fun.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye.
Bye.